Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Common Council of the City of Huntington for December 10th, 2024. Prior to the business meeting, we will have an invocation led by Pastor Scott Rainey of Huntington First Church in the Nazarene, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Julie Shear. All those who wish to participate may rise at this time.
Father, we come before you tonight very thankful that you are the God of all creation, that you know what our needs are, that you see us, that you see those that are even hurting on our streets and in our homes. Lord, I pray that tonight that you, your Spirit would guide and direct our mayor and our council. May your face shine upon them and give them mercy and grace tonight, help them to hear your voice and to obey you, your direction for the decisions that are even made tonight. Lord, we trust you today. Our life is in your hands. We commit ourselves again and afresh to you. Thank you for this season. It is a season of hope, a season of excitement, but most of all, a chance to remember that you gave your Son, Jesus, so that we could have salvation for eternity. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Julie. And with that, then, we will call the business meeting to order, beginning with a roll call. Julie?
Brodigam.
Present.
Chapman. Felton.
Present.
Funk.
Present.
Johnson.
Here.
Pike.
Present.
Renssberger.
Present.
Thank you. And having established a quorum for the conducting of city business, I'll move along to first time on the agenda, a public hearing for additional appropriation from Park Fund and then also ARPA. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Any members of the public here to address counsel on the matter? Not seeing our hearing at this time, we will close the public hearing on the additional appropriation ordinance. It will be further discussed later on the agenda. We'll move along to consideration of the minutes of the previous meeting. Is there a motion to bring the November 26 minutes to the floor for consideration and adoption?
So moved.
Second.
Of a motion and second, further discussion and consideration of the minutes? Not hearing any at this time. We'll call the question in favor of approval of the minutes as submitted. Julie? Yes.
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 Brodigam.
Yes. Thank you. And moving along to reports from committees, boards, and commissions, we'll start with council members and then move to the two reports that are on the agenda. Paul, anything this evening?
Nothing tonight.
Dwight?
Yeah, Lime City Economic Development met last Friday at Huntington University at the newly renovated fiscal education facility, the Plex. And heard a number of things, including a year-end report from Mark Wickersham, which we're going to hear shortly. Stealing of his thunder. Heard from the contractors who worked on the project. Did some routine choosing of leaders for the next year and that kind of thing. Good meeting.
Thank you, Dwight. PJ?
Nothing tonight.
Todd?
Well, I'm going to nitpick because Mark will probably cover all this. But for HQ, one thing I thought was interesting, of the businesses that we brought into town and the new jobs that we brought into town this year, the average salary was $27 an hour. So I thought that was pretty good. And then Mark has actually been with us for, well, this is our fifth-best year in the last 17 years, 2024, so he'll probably cover that. And then we have new officers for next year. Eric Fawcett is the president, Troy Johnson is the vice president, Doug Wilcox is the, he the treasurer, Mark? Okay. And then Steve Weingard is the secretary. So that's all I got.
Thank you. Andrew?
Yes, RDC met last week. We went over our year-end budget. Everything's on track. Expenditures are at a minimal, so that's great. We also discussed these ARPA appropriations and, or I'm sorry, obligations as a partnership with RDC in the City of Huntington. And I won't go into the details of it because that will be presented later, but the RDC voted unanimously in favor of it and thought that was pretty good. So it was a great meeting as well.
Dave? Emma?
No major updates today, but as a group, we're still definitely learning lots about business and project management, so no major updates about our specific project, but we are still definitely working very hard in learning about new things, so thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda then would be the year-end report alluded to by HQ. Is there a motion to open the floor for Mark to present? Motion and second? Motion and second? All in favor of receiving the report indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Sorry, that's a wrong meeting, wrong procedure.
Yep.
Julie, go ahead and call the roll on that, please.
Funk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Aye.
Pike. Renssberger.
Yes.
Brodigam.
Yes.
Felton.
Yes.
All right. Now whether we're following the right rules of the right meeting, Mr. Wickersham, please.
Well, thank you for making time for me this evening. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. This is the 17th presentation like this that I've made in my career at HQ. Looking forward to starting on the fourth governor in my tenure here at HQ. Third and a half, I guess, US President in that process as well. And enjoy continuing to work with the city, Mayor Strick and your leadership, and really appreciate the mayor and Councilman Johnson participating on our board and Councilman Brodigam on Lime City. One of the discussions that I had recently with a reporter from Europe was a question about, you know, you're in your 17th year and this agency that I represent was created in 1997. How have you done this? How have you maintained the continuity? And I said, well, we have a very unique Board of Directors and set of bylaws in that the Board is made up of 17 board members, six represent the business community at large, in addition then to the school corporation, Chamber of Commerce, and the group that Dwight mentioned earlier, the Lime City Committee. But in addition then, the municipalities that agreed to support us and hire us with a fee-for-service contract actually get voting seats on the Board of Directors. And when you think about the number of vendor contracts that you have as a city government, how many companies do you actually get a seat on their Board of Directors, let alone two seats in this case with the mayor and the city council, to help direct the actual operations? And I said, in many respects, that creates a relationship where people who really have a stake in what we do have a vote in what we do and have a voice in helping direct policy. And it really has helped with the longevity and the consistency of our organization. And in that interview, the magazine editor, it's published in Europe, it's intended to circulate in Europe and in the Middle East. And if you think about what's going on in that part of the world right now, the message that that magazine writer was trying to push and promote was how businesses can thrive anyway, and how people thrive anyway. And the theme of my interview was basically continuity and knowing that you've got a friend when you have a problem is really important in the business world. Because even if a business is based on stability and certainty in the marketplace, you know, they have to have that predictability, right? But they're going to have problems. On the other hand, if your business model is based disrupting in the marketplace, you still have to know what that baseline is, so you understand and idea what it is you're working toward. And so the article's to be published in January and the editor was quite receptive to our message and understood all that. With that, I want to get into the prelim, and I want to call this a preliminary annual report. I'll have printed materials professionally for you in the first quarter to finalize and wrap up what we've done. But it's really been a good year and a busy year, and it's a collaborative effort, it's a team sport. I mean, we've been able to facilitate 10 industrial projects this year, projects with Bendix, Dan Service and Repair. Our attraction project this year ended up being Everfresh Fruit Company from Oregon, who is investing $13.5 million in Huntington County to establish a company that manufactures fruit toppings for ice cream, that industry. We're looking forward to them getting their plant up and operational by mid-year. Fusion Chemical actually did two projects with us this year. Huntington Properties LLC invested on the south side of Huntington. Huntington Sheet Metal did a project. The former Heritage Tool and Die Facility on US 224 East is now Park Drive Automotive and working with the owners of Heritage to market the property. M&amp;S Industrial Metal Fabricators did a project that was major, and Sortera Alloys at Markle did another major project as well. So the combination of those clients invested over $40 million of their own capital in Huntington County this year. And as Councilman Johnson mentioned, the average hourly wage of those projects is actually $27.68 per hour. And in my history in the 17 years that I've been here, that's the fifth-highest investment year that we've had. And of the 17 books, eight of those, we've been recognized nationally as among the top 100 small market economic development efforts. In 2023, we made the top 10. And if you look in the lobby downstairs, you'll see copies on display, the framed acknowledgements. I also want to point out on the operational side, our agency's fundraising, our charitable fundraising as a 501(c)(3), we surpassed last year's annual total and have already finished ahead of our year-end budget goal. So our fundraising efforts are going really well. All of our municipal contract payments have been received timely. We thank the city for making sure that happens in case, and just really appreciate the support and commitment. We also have a real quick update on a couple of things at River Fork West. Project, if you drive by the property on County Road 200, you'll see a need to kind of up a fence right along the road itself. I've got that contracted with Amore Excavating to get that cleaned up, really make that look a lot nicer. Help us with mowing, it'll just generally speak. We did have a call in the summer from a person really sensitive to environment and noticed that there was a spot where we had poison sumac growing. Got on it right away, got it sprayed, but then also realized, okay, we just need to get that up. So that project is on schedule. We also are working, and have been working for a year at the direction of the Board to direct signage, better market the industrial park. And we finally have votes that we're happy with. While we haven't officially applied for a permit yet, we're doing everything we can to make sure that process goes smoothly. Had a couple of discussions at the Lime City meeting about text and signs, and we've made adjustments. And then finally, I just want to announce that we have five additional prospects that are evaluating the property for projects. And it's really encouraging to see global activity looking at the property. And otherwise wouldn't have that available without the support of the city and encouragement of both the county and our Board of Directors, lending institutions that have made that possible. We celebrated ribbon cuttings at Teijin Automotive Technologies this summer on their $110 million investment, and recently did a ribbon cutting with Huntington Properties and the county commissioners. Working collaboratively with Ivy Tech and Work One and the county commissioners, we hosted a job fair at the courthouse earlier in the year that was very well-attended and represented among the industrial. We also had to make a promise to the county government that we weren't going to try to recruit their employees while we were having the job fair, because it obviously was an opportunity. We also then, on each fiscal year, which is a calendar year for us, our Board of Directors does one of two things. We either have our, we either have a CPA firm audit our fiscal records, or on the alternating year, we do a fiscal review. And so we just completed the audit of the 2023 fiscal year successfully with no adjusting entries of any kind. And the Board yesterday, this morning approved doing a fiscal review with an outside CPA firm of our 2023 fiscal year records. And then we, as a matter of best practices, send that report, whether it's an audit or a review, to the State Board of Accounts, so it can be found online in the state portal if anyone's interested in looking. Happy to have that available on that portal. I also was fortunate this year and was appointed and joined Mayor Strick as a commissioner on the Strategic Development Commission in Northeast Indiana and have been representing Lidos, as we're called, in that environment as well. And finally, on that note, I was invited by the city to be part of a discussion. The mayor was there, as well as the EDC and Mike Hartburg, where we took a look at the details and the history of how tax abatement works and how we've handled that process in the city. And we're proud of how that's been done. Our situation's a little different than some counties around us, where this year, I think we had maybe two or three requests for tax abatement in the city. Other locations may have 50, 100 of those in order. So their standards and how they process those have to be done differently. But that doesn't mean there aren't things that we can learn from how they do that. And so we're going to keep that research moving forward and see how we can improve our scoring, if you will, and our process for that, to just make sure that we're doing the right things. Councilman Brodigam mentioned that the Lime City officers were elected at our meeting recently. Lee Pascoe will continue to serve as the president of that group and be joined by Brenda Williams, a local Realtor, to be the vice president. Our meetings this year were conducted at Fusion Chemical, Teijin Automotive, Incipio Devices, Huntington Municipal Airport, the Huntington County Jail, and Huntington University. And at the board level for HQ, a member-at-large, Jeff Souter, announced today that he was retiring from the board officially at year-end. And the board selected Nick Allwine, Huntington resident Nick Allwine, who's the president of FCI Construction Company, to join the board in January, a member-at-large. Talked about the officers. And then at this point, I just want to kind of wrap up by talking a little bit about the 2025 contract, service contract presentations that are going on right now. And tonight's presentation is preparation for being at the Board of Works next week at their next meeting. But at this point, we've received approvals in 2025 from the county commissioners of the Town of Andrews and the Town of Markle. We're scheduled again with the Board of Works and scheduled to appear before the Roanoke Town Council on the 17th and the Warren Town Council meeting later in December. And in regard to the fee-for-service contracts, I think it's good to know for the city council that all I did in the proposal for the city was change the dates. Their annual contracts, froze the price at the same level as it was last year, and the open and terms are exactly the same as was agreed. And it's also important, I think, real quickly to understand, and I've talked about this at length, but the lane of traffic that HQ operates in is industrial development. Over the years, the phrase "economic development" has changed. When I first started in this business, when I worked for the state of Indiana at the time, when you were saying "economic development," you meant industrial development. But it's a broader category now, no different than if you think about the healthcare community, right? Healthcare, you've got dentists, you've got surgeons, pediatricians, eye doctors. You have a number of different professions that are all under the category of healthcare. You have the same thing in economic development. You still have industrial development, but you have practitioners and programs for entrepreneurial development, entrepreneurial support, workforce development, quality of life, quality of place, grant administration, community development, housing. There just are a number of categories. And our board and working together with the communities has pointed out that in HQ's case, in industrial development, that lane of traffic, things are going pretty well. So rather than getting confused about what our mission and focus is, we stick to the basics and operate in that traffic. And I think, again, it's important to point out that as we do industrial development, it's still in alignment with your strategic plan, comprehensive plan, land use planning for the city. We don't want to get outside of that. We want to make sure that we stay within ourselves in terms of what kind of infrastructure we have available, what kind of financing we have available, improvements are needed, and that we all work together. And I think the fact that things have gone so well for us speaks to the fact that when we're all at the table working together, we get the job. And I'm, you know, I'm looking forward to my 18th year, and at that, at this point, I'd be happy to address any questions you might.
Any questions for Mark?
Okay.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Next report would be one by myself with a summary report for the American Rescue Plan dollars allocated to the City of Huntington. Is there a motion to allow presentation and receive that report?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Call the question in favor of presentation and receiving the report. Julie?
Johnson?
Yes.
Pike?
Yes.
Renssberger?
Yes.
Brodigam?
Yes.
Felton?
Yes.
Funk?
Council members, I'll direct your attention to the spreadsheet presented to you, a single page and color-coded. We'll walk through basically four sections of the report, the underlying background on the American Rescue Plan dollars and eligible uses, the amounts that came to the City of Huntington, the plan that city council and the administration have been operating under, and then our next steps. So with that, then, the City of Huntington and other municipalities across the nation were directed by Congress and the US Treasury for eligible uses for American Rescue Plan dollars. The statutory uses were to respond to the pandemic or negative economic impacts, including assistance to households, small businesses, and nonprofits, or impacted industries such as tourism, travel, and hospitality. Second eligible use was premium paid to eligible workers performing essential work as determined by the recipient government. The third item was for the provision of government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue due to the pandemic. And the fourth was for necessary investments in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. As things move forward, we received the final rule from Treasury in January of 2022. City of Huntington and council took action at that time, identifying revenue replacement as the top priority because it gave us the most flexibility in how to use these dollars locally and work not only for immediate needs, so there might be a future return on investment of those dollars. So we did claim 100% of those funds through that process. Moving down a few line items there, you'll see the initial ARPA allocation that came to the City of Huntington was $3,869,289.72. There were a number of, a small number of municipalities across the nation that opted not to receive their ARPA dollars, and so that pool was then divided amongst those municipalities that did. So we received an additional ARPA distribution through that action of $7,322.94, leaving a total ARPA allocation to the City of Huntington of $3,876,612. Now, council will note, there were a number of projects that were brought to council over the previous few years, such as the connector trail up by the hospital. Now, the $170,000 that was utilized there was actually utilized as part of the roadway improvements that were there. And we were not, we didn't actually require those funds on the trail itself. We were going to use that all on the roadway. Similarly, the paving line item that's there is appropriated and intended for Division Street. So when those funds are already obligated under a contract, they are in fulfillment of the Treasury rule. You'll see as we go through this, there are some funds that are not currently obligated under a contract. We have a plan forward on that. The orange blocks are breakouts of line items. So one item here is noted for downtown improvements. Those downtown improvements coincide with some private investments that we're looking at here in the city, as well as public dollars being made available for improvements around walkability, accessibility, overall aesthetic and appearance of downtown, as well as the project identified here with city hall renovations, according to with the lease revenue bonds previously appropriated by council. The Huntington Police Department radio project allowed us to get new radios into all of our officers, which allowed us to have secure transmissions, especially when dealing with safety matters out of sidewalks. That is what created the new sidewalk around Hill and Carlisle Crossing, completing that once the developer completed the build-out of that Section 5 of Carlisle. Lead Service Line Survey is the initial process of fulfilling our federal obligations there. That work was completed in October. We continue to move forward on that. Various utility projects that were identified were acquisition of a new Vector trailer, improvements with Cottage and Jessup, which is a major project. Council appropriated those funds, and those will be expended going forward, as well as the KFC lift station, which is its life site. So that has been replaced and closed out. Tree canopy improvements, these are specifically, that expenditure was the city's portion of funds with the DNR matching grant to create the arboretum at Evergreen Park. Lowhead Dam removal will be the second lowhead dam behind Duke Energy Building downtown. That should be a matter of completion here yet this month. $143,331 were appropriated for drug interdiction programs with the city police. And then we have identified a potential $230,000 that can be applied towards improving our operations that are used for water and wastewater. That will still need further fleshed out, and so you'll see that included in the address later. Final item is tree canopy equipment totaling just under $60,000. That tree canopy equipment includes a small vehicle watering tank and a spade for being able to relocate larger trees. This is in conjunction with the USDA grant the city received. Under that USDA grant, we could not purchase equipment, and so that's why we thought it would be best to use those ARPA dollars for the purchase of that equipment. That's going to be subject to council later in the meeting tonight. So the total projects, those planned expenditures totals out to $3,876,612.60. What we appropriated is what we're going to be expending. But within that, at this point, we have just under $900,000 that have been obligated, around a million dollars that have been expended year-to-date, which leaves us with an unobligated remainder of just under $2 million. Under the final Treasury rule, all funds need obligated by December 31st of this year and expended by December 31st of 2026. and expended by December 31st of 2026. So as we looked at that back in May and began planning for a closeout of the year, we recognized that the best way forward would not be to rush these dollars out the door and move through a hasty bid process. But instead, we did consult with other professionals and also the U.S. Treasury rules, and determined that the best course of action was to actually obligate these under a contract with the city's redevelopment commission. This fulfills our obligations with the U.S. Treasury, but allows us to move forward in thoughtful expenditures of those funds. And so that contract has been approved and signed by both parties. So it's being reported tonight to Council, so that you're aware. The funds that have been identified within that, and that contract is fully available to Council and others, but the downtown projects that are listed here, as well as the potential efficiency projects for city utilities operations, those are within that contract amount. Final item to note, then, is that over the course of this, the Clerk Treasurer's Office has had these funds vested, and as a result, about $360,000 of interest that's been gained to the city. Treasury rule that just releases to the general fund, and so that amount is available for appropriation for any legal purposes of the city at this point. So through a lot of numbers and line items that you have off of one spreadsheet, any initial questions on that pertaining specifically to the report? So they do not need completed by 2024 since they are obligated under a contract. They're in safe harbor, so to speak. They've just not been expended yet. So they've already been duly authorized, they're available for expenditure, but those bills haven't been paid out yet on them. Okay, not hearing any further questions at this time. I'll submit the report to Council, and of course, obviously, if Council has other questions or concerns regarding the matter, we'll address them as they come up. Thank you. Any petitions or comments from citizens this evening? I'm not aware of any. Continuing along the agenda and not being aware of any old business, we'll move along to consideration of new business. First item under new business is first and final reading of Resolution 17R24. Julie?
Resolution 17R24. This resolution, if adopted, will encumber funds from various city department appropriations.
And is there a motion to bring the Resolution 17R24 to the floor for consideration and adoption?
No move, second.
A motion, and we have a second. Further discussion and consideration of Resolution 17R24 by Council members.
This is moving funds around that have already been approved, correct?
So an encumbrance is where funds that have already been appropriated are tied to a contract or a purchase order, but that purchase order can't be fulfilled within the calendar year from which the funds were appropriated. So this will allow those funds to stay earmarked for that purchase order into the new year, so they can be expended. Julie, did I get that right? Further questions on 17R24? Not hearing any at this time, then, we'll call the question in favor of approval on final reading. Julie?
Pike?
Yes.
Renssberger?
Yes.
Rodigam?
Yes.
Felton?
Yes.
Funk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item under new business is first and final reading of Resolution 18R24. Julie?
Resolution 18R24. This resolution, if adopted, would allow transfers between appropriations in different categories in order to appropriately adjust certain appropriations. This resolution will provide the Clerk Treasurer with authority to make additional transfers within the same category as appropriately required.
And is there a motion for adoption on final reading of Resolution 18R24?
No move.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Further discussion and consideration of the matter. Todd, this is what you were referring to earlier. This is what allows the Clerk Treasurer flexibility to move within line items to make sure that everything balances out here at the end of the year.
Thank you.
Further question or discussion of Resolution 18R24? Not hearing any at this time, we'll call the question in favor of approval on final reading of Resolution 18R24. Julie?
Renssberger?
Yes.
Rodigam?
Yes.
Felton?
Yes.
Funk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Pike?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item under new business is first reading of Ordinance 23C24. Julie?
Ordinance 23C24. This ordinance, if adopted, would provide additional funding to park building structure and ARPA unappropriated.
And is there a motion to approve Ordinance 23C24 on first reading?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion and consideration? For Council's benefit, the park fund appropriation here is to allow for extra cushion based on feedback from the Clerk Treasurer's Office, concerned that that count might dip into the negative, which isn't allowable. And Julie, do you have any detail from Kristi on the ARPA funds here?
Yes, she said that 247,000 is the remainder of the Cottage and Jessup that was, of the 500,000 that was budgeted, and then 67,000 is for the remainder of the trail up at...
Okay, thank you. Further discussion, consideration by Council members? Not hearing any at this time, we'll call the question in favor of the additional appropriation. Julie?
Rodigam?
Yes.
Felton?
Yes.
Funk? Johnson?
Yes.
Pike?
Yes.
Renssberger?
Yes.
Do we need to suspend the rules on that?
That would be appreciated. Is there a motion to suspend the rules and allow for second and final reading tonight?
No move on that. Second.
Motion and second on suspension of the rules to allow for second and final reading of Ordinance 23C24. Further discussion and consideration? We'll call the question in favor of suspension of the rules.
Felton?
Yes.
Funk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Pike?
Yes.
Renssberger?
Yes.
Rodigam?
Yes.
With that, then, we have, do we have a motion for second and final reading of Ordinance 23C24?
No move.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Further discussion and consideration on second and final reading? Not hearing any at this time, we'll call the question in favor of approval on second and final reading of Ordinance 23C24. Julie?
Funk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Pike?
Yes.
Renssberger?
Yes.
Rodigam?
Yes.
Felton?
Yes.
Moving along, then, we have Ordinance 24C24, first reading. Julie?
Ordinance 24C24. This ordinance, if adopted, would restate Chapter 55 in its entirety concerning stormwater management regulations, bringing the city into compliance with state law regarding MS4 GP, which was recently amended by IDIM, and remove obsolete provisions related to stormwater regulations currently contained with Chapters 56, 59, and 159 within the city's code that are suspended by these amendments, superseded by these amendments.
Is there a motion to bring Ordinance 24C24 to the floor for consideration and adoption?
No move.
Motion and second. Got Director Cutress here to present on behalf of the matter.
Yeah, good evening. You've all have seen Ordinance 24C24, and I also provided each of you with a brief letter, providing, giving a brief overview of some of the major things within 24C24. Just want to give a little bit of a background behind it. The city is what's called an MS4 community. MS4 stands for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. We fall under that category under the state of Indiana, IDIM, and EPA, based on the city's population size of being greater than 10,000 people, and the fact that we have a separate storm sewer system in at least a part of our city. The whole idea behind the MS4 GP, previously Rule 13, is to prevent pollution from reaching, traveling from city streets and just city in general, and reaching the city, the public waterways. That is the big emphasis behind it. There are several aspects behind the MS4 program, from illicit discharge and detection, which is preventing oils and greases and that kind of stuff from being dumped into the storm sewer system, reaching the river. Construction project, erosion control, keeping our streets clean, that kind of stuff from reaching, anything that gets into that storm sewer system reaches the rivers. And then there's post-construction regulations as well that regulate stormwater detention and stormwater quality items, both the city and our projects, as well as private projects up to, such as subdivisions or any of our larger, major industrial projects where they've disturbed large amounts of area and built large amounts of impervious surface, such as rooftops and paved areas. The new Chapter 55, as the synopsis says there at the top of Ordinance 24C24, consolidates and replaces the current Chapter 55, Chapter 56, Chapter 59, and 159 into one unified Chapter 55. The way our stormwater ordinances were written when the city became an MS4 community, they were developed into four different chapters, each regulating different pieces. And as the stormwater program has developed since 2003, when those ordinances were last overhauled, having everything in multiple different chapters has made it a lot harder to work with the public and those developing stormwater items to follow our regulations. With the new MS4 GP, it requires us to update our stormwater ordinances to come in compliance with IDIM and the EPA's guidance. And the direction that most communities are heading is one unified stormwater chapter. It makes it a lot easier to follow, makes it a lot easier to regulate. Some of the big items that are changing in here, again, everything's still in there, same general ideas behind everything. We are changing a little bit of some of the levels of permitting. Our current stormwater permits don't regulate down to the 10,000 square foot of disturbance level that is required under the new EPA guidance. So now that is, we will then develop a permit to regulate that level of compliance. It also then continues to regulate everything at one acre or larger level of disturbance. Projects of that size then also not only have to get a local permit, but have to get a statewide permit as well. Few other items, in here, there is a flow chart that explains the clear process forward of applying for a permit, the regulation of the permit, the inspections of the permit, all the way through permit closeout. There's also a more clear defined process in here for when somebody violates the permit regulations, the permit guidelines, what the city's process forward is to bring them back into compliance, all the way from giving them written violation notices through the potential of fines, and then ultimately making the corrections ourselves and assessing those fees back onto them, should we have to go that far. So all of that is more spelled out in here. The, there are a few other things in here as well, as far as spells out the clear process for the requirements of private development in their, such as subdivisions who have detention ponds, and their requirement of yearly inspecting those, as well as giving the city the ability to inspect those yearly as well, so that we, we are required to inspect post-construction stormwater items yearly and prove that we have done so, so that when we get audited by IDIM, we can show that we have done all of the inspections on the post-construction items to maintain in compliance there. That's probably the big items. This 45-page ordinance is actually a little smaller than if we had just pushed everything together, because we did pull a few technical items, such as, you look at the current one, there's several tables in there talking about detention rates, rainfall rates, all of that kind of stuff, and they're very broad in general. We've put some guidance in here to bring it more to a local level of calculations and rainfall amounts, while pulling a lot of the technical advice out and putting it in a technical manual. To go along with this, we have a stormwater technical manual that talks about some of the options out there for post-construction, construction, erosion control, all that kind of stuff. We've pulled some of that out of here, put that in the technical manual, so that as technology continues to evolve, we can update that more efficiently than redoing an entire ordinance again. That's, that's the majority of what's going on in this. I don't know if Council has any questions for me. I would ask that we suspend the rules for this ordinance as well tonight and pass it on second reading, so that I can then certify to IDIM that we have updated our stormwater ordinance, and we can close that out and move beyond that step during this calendar year. Any questions? There are aspects that are making it a little easier. There are other aspects that, under the IDIM and the EPA, require us to do additional, we have additional trainings we have to attend every year, and there are additional inspections that we have to perform every year. So while some of the aspects may be a little easier, there's other aspects that are more work. There are, yes, there will be pieces that will increase our workload, but that's where my staff in my office will receive the additional training, going to either, Purdue actually puts on quite a few stormwater trainings every year, and so does LTAP, so there's some additional trainings that are honestly free and great for my staff to go to, and we'll be doing that so that we can continue to maintain in compliance. We actually just conducted a training with all city field staff from Utilities Park and Street Department here in this room just last week. It's one of our annual required trainings that will be happening yearly. Yep, yep. The first step is this, and then going to all the trainings that we need to go to. Yes, it is, it is a requirement, yes.
Further questions or discussion by Council members? Not hearing any at this time, we'll call the question in favor of approval on first reading of Ordinance 24C24. Julie?
Johnson?
Yes.
Pike?
Yes.
Renssberger?
Yes.
Rodigam?
Yes.
Felton?
Yes.
Funk?
Yes.
Thank you. And then, per Director Cutress's request, is there a motion to suspend the rules and allow for second and final reading of Ordinance 24C24?
No move.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion and consideration on the motion to suspend... Motion and second. Discussion and consideration on the motion to suspend the rules? Not hearing any further discussion. We'll call the question in favor of suspension of the rules to allow for second and final reading of ordinance 24C24. Julie?
Pike?
Yes.
Renssberger?
Yes.
Rodigam?
Yes.
Felton?
Yes.
Funk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you. And with that, then, is there a motion to, uh, allow for second and final reading of ordinance 24C24?
No move. Second.
A motion and second. Further discussion and consideration of the ordinance on second reading? Not hearing any at this time. We'll call the question in favor of adoption and approval on second and final reading, ordinance 20, 24C24. Julie?
Renssberger?
Yes.
Rodigam?
Yes.
Felton?
Yes.
Funk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Pike?
Yes.
Thank you.
You? Next, moving along the agenda to miscellaneous items. Uh, first up is the December 2024 monthly reports. Julie?
In your packets were the latest budget numbers ending the end of November. Christie also wanted to have me remind you that, um, we are canceling the last council meeting on December 31st, and the 2025 schedule for meetings was in your packets as well.
And do we need to act on adopting that schedule? Thank you. Further discussion or consideration by council members of the three miscellaneous items just covered? Okay, not hearing any at this time. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Second.
A motion and second to adjourn. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.